Okay, the Carroll City Council is now in, back in open session. And you got times and everything. We are going to cover one item that we moved from the earlier agenda. And it is under eight A, the, uh, under reports, city manager job description and position profile. And that, you did write the memo on that, do you wanna?
I did.
Just introduce Elizabeth or do some, okay.
Yeah, I'll do a quick introduction.
Okay.
Included in the packet was, uh, position profile, um, and job description for the city manager position. Um, this was, uh, put together by a team of both Elizabeth Hansen and city staff. Um, we did make a few changes, uh, today. Um, and those were passed out on the council dais. Overall, pretty minor in nature. Uh, we, we did change out a couple photos, uh, we were able to locate some better photos. Um, and there'll be one change, we'll make it on page five. Uh, we're gonna add a website link that will take people to the website on all the council initiatives. And so people then will have access to all those reports that you've had previous to, uh, as you were preparing for the, uh, upcoming planning sessions. Um, and then there's, I, I think I found one more typo tonight sitting here, but we'll make those changes. Um, and then I think under education experience and training, um, there was a request, um, to add, um, some language that a master's degree would prefer. Um, so we highlighted that section just as a discussion point, um, for tonight. And then, um, also included in the packet was the, the job description, um, that, that I currently work under, so if there's any changes to that that the council would like to see fit, uh, this would be the time to, uh, make those and then, uh, advertising will begin, applications will be do, uh, assuming we get it posted tomorrow would be the goal, uh, cause there'll be eighteen days between, uh, tomorrow and then the deadline to apply on November, uh, eleventh, uh, to get set for interviews on December ninth and tenth. Um, and so I, I, I would ask to confirm tonight that December ninth and tenth works for everyone. Uh, cause obviously if that date gets pushed back, um, that will definitely impact. Uh, you may have additional time to, uh, accept applications because you're probably gonna be after the new year at that point. Uh, but anyhow, uh, certainly, uh, Elizabeth Hansen's online and can answer any questions. And certainly I'm happy to answer any questions council has tonight. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking at the compensation and benefits, the salary range.
Yep.
One oh nine, eight thirteen. To get a good qualified candidate, uh, I would recommend to make that a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, I don't wanna close the door on the top end to get a good qualified candidate to get in here to interview. And then I'd like to raise the bottom end from a hundred and nine to a hundred and thirty thousand to make sure that if somebody does get the job, that they're gonna make at least that. You know, you, you know, Mike, you set the standard in this town as a, as a qualified city manager and a lot of people are, are asking us as city council people to try to get somebody qualified like you. And I just feel those numbers won't work to get that qualified applicant. If anybody else wants to agree or disagree with that, you can voice in.
I agree, Laverne, this is a position we're gonna have to be stealing away from somebody else. And you've gotta make it attractive. It's definitely more than a forty hour work week, so I'm with you, I think a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty is, is in line.
And as it says, right after the salary range, Laverne, that you just edited, depending on qualifications and experience, so we have latitude. But we're still showing how seriously we take this position and that we want a strong candidate or pool to draw from.
Okay, was there any other changes to? Did you wanna talk also about, uh? Everybody's in agreement to the one thirty, one sixty, pretty much, okay? Then, um, did you wanna make a, a change to the education and training area?
When we advertised for Mike's position six years ago, this was the word, the verbiage, uh, with the master's preferred, and I think it, with that range, it's, it, it should be included. Preferred, not carved in stone, again, we have latitude based on experience, et cetera, and you can substitute a year's experience, well, everybody's read it, so.
So, um, would you mind if I, uh, just mention one concern I have for, um, for that language?
Go, go ahead, Elizabeth, yeah, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, so I make sure you can hear me.
Yeah, you're good.
Um, so when we, when we discussed those, um, last week, when we looked through the job description that you have on file, um, you know, we, we, uh, we are proposing that that remain, cause that is what is in your job description currently. Um, what I liked about it is that it really does cast a really wide net, um, and doesn't deter somebody that doesn't have the master's degree, but has maybe, say, ten, fifteen years of experience to still apply. Um, I, in my, in my experience with doing executive searches, I do get concerned about that. Um, I know of a candidate that many, uh, of you and, uh, community members spoke of while I was there last week, and that person may not be qualified or maybe not thinks, maybe she may not think she's qualified to apply. And of course, I can say, it's just preferred, it's just preferred. I just have concerns about, about that language. Um, when I talked about scoring the candidates for you, when I bring all the applications to you, um, on November fourteenth, I will be looking at their years of experience, master's degree would give a, get a ten. Um, you know, a bachelor's degree would get, you know, say, an eight. Um, an associate's a couple, a couple points and so forth, and any other training would get, you know, certain points. So I would score those, and obviously the ones with a master's degree would be scoring the highest. So, um, so I think on that point, if you, you know, I think you wanna be able to see as many as you can. And I know you're concerned about that high end range as far as salary goes, but I'm also concerned about the, you know, the qualifications you're speaking of that you're, like you said, preferring. Um, so with that, those are my two cents about it. Um, if you, if you do make changes, then you just need to make changes to the, to the job description tonight as well.
Based on other profiles I've read, that's pretty standard to say preferred, Johnston did it. Um, I, other towns, when I surveyed their documents. And the thing is, if somebody with a lot of experience who's really qualified, uh, is deterred simply because the word preferred is in there, then that's probably not a candidate I would want as a strong leader in the city manager's chair. If something of the word preferred and that person doesn't feel that he or she could show up and sell him, her, or herself, then that, that, that does not make sense. Somebody with a lot of experience should say, yes, show up and say, I may not have a master's, but look at my resume, and, and so on and so forth. So I, I'm not buying that, Elizabeth. I appreciate your input, I appreciate your input, but
Yeah.
it's, it's pretty standard from what I've read, and with this salary range, just saying preferred should not deter anybody with a strong personality and a strong skill set.
Mr. Mayor, can I offer a comment?
Go ahead, Jim.
Oftentimes, when I advertise for police chiefs, a master's degree is preferred. What I typically do, though, is I put a caveat below that says, "The city may consider additional years of experience and/or training in lieu of an education requirement." So that it leaves the door open for somebody with a bachelor's degree and lots of experience. But as most people, I don't have that in front of me, but, but it, it leaves that door open for somebody, like, we've had a city manager before who didn't have the master's degree, but had the experience. So the city has the flexibility of reviewing those credentials and saying, well, yeah, I, as much experience against a master's degree is probably
I two hundred percent agree with you, and that's how it's worded. And also, that's how it was worded in two thousand sixteen, when Mike was appointed. So this is pretty
So you're agreeing with this or not with this?
Yes.
You're agreeing with this?
Because it's added a master's degree is preferred, and then the last sentence is exactly what, um, Jeff said.
Yeah, let me read it to you, Jeff.
And that's how we worded it in sixteen, go ahead, Mark.
I'll read it to you. It says, "May substitute," the last line is, "may substitute a master's degree for one year required experience or an equivalent combination of education experience or training."
I thi- I think it leaves you guys a lot of flexibility. I think it covers Elizabeth's basis as far as
Yes.
making sure that you get, I don't wanna call them underachievers, but people that haven't obtained a master's degree yet, but, but maybe have a lot of experience. You know, Gerald Clausen is probably the classic example. He was fantastic, but might not have made it in the door, even applied absent, uh, information like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I see it both ways, I don't wanna turn anybody off, but I also wanna get, I wanna get the high bar.
My thing is, that's what you guys asked, I think it covers everybody's concerns.
So can I just clarify?
Of course.
Are we saying that what's in yellow is what we want it to be?
Well, this is It got changed from what was in the packet.
Okay.
So this is the
I understand that, but, but nowhere in there does it say, "master's preferred."
Yeah, it does, first line.
First sentence.
First sentence.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I was reading the whole four-year
It's late, girl.
I've only read it a million times.
It's okay.
So are we thinking we wanna take out then, "master's degree preferred"? Or just leave it, just leave it?
Leave, leave what the yellow as is.
But it doesn't match the job description, is what Elizabeth was saying.
Okay, I gotcha.
Right, Elizabeth, did I paraphrase that right?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Well, a job description is different than advertising for a position.
Any other thoughts on that? So go along with how it's written, is that?
I, I, that, yeah, it was in yellow for discussion.
Okay.
So this is, I think this fits with our expectations and the salary. And gives us flexibility.
Yeah. And you'd agree with that too, Mr. Recruiter?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I think it covers everybody's concerns.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, um, I don't know if we need a motion on that yet, even, but we don't, I mean
At some point, we'll want a motion to
To, to approve this in its entirety, right?
Move the changes.
Right. Um.
I just wanna ask a quick question, I just wanna make sure I don't miss this. This position is somebody that will have to live in the city of Carroll, is that correct?
They have to move here.
They have six months is, so
Okay, I got that, okay, no, I see.
That is in the job, like, requirements rate, sorry?
Yeah, it's under compensation and benefits.
Okay.
The last line.
Now, I would tell you, I have had some people reach out to me. Um, and I will tell you, I've, first of all, let me say, I strongly believe someone in this position should live in your community.
Right, me too.
Um, but I do think the council needs to think through a little bit of period of time here, and they may wanna reconsider, like, even the six month requirement right now. Um, I think with the housing market, and especially interest rates, I locked in on last Tuesday at six and a quarter, Friday, my bank was seven percent. And, you know, if you're in January and it's a ten percent interest rate, you know, you may really have to think about, how do we help someone in that transition period of time? And is six months gonna be sufficient, and you need to think about a year? I don't know if you have, it's just something to keep in mind, because it, it definitely is gonna be a hurdle that the, that the city's gonna have to get over.
Can, can we, with that in thought, can we consider changing the word "required" to "expected"?
Um, Mayor, what I have done and is put, uh, an extra sentence on the end of that that says, "Unless an extension is agreed upon by the parties." And then if you know your candidate is working with a realtor, then you can, you know, extend it another, say, three months or six months.
That's good.
Um, but it just leaves it open then for you to negotiate something further.
Okay, can you just repeat that one more time, I'm just gonna make a note, Elizabeth?
Sure.
So it's, unless what?
You can just say, you know, "An extension of that residency requirement can be extended for the, you know, per the parties." Um,
So how about
How do I say that?
I'll, I'll word it this way, residency within the city limits is, um, required within six months of employment, unless an extension is agreed upon.
Per agreement, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, per agreement.
Just put it down.
Yep.
And what I've said to candidates that are negotiating, you know, the offer and acceptance and so forth, is, you know, just, you know, if they're working with a realtor, I couldn't imagine that your city council would, you know, say, "Nope, your time's up." You know, you're gonna, you know, if they're actively working on relocating to your community, um, you know, that's usually a pretty good indication they're, they're in.
Okay, so that, that will be added, everybody's
Mike, would, I, I'm sorry, would you repeat that again?
I'd take the same sentence, but just end it, comma, "unless an extension is agreed upon."
Okay.
That's simple, I think, is all I can say.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, was there anything else in this document that we wanted to review? Was there a question about timeline?
I just wanna confirm that the dates work for everyone involved. Because if, if December ninth and tenth, I mean, so, just, Elizabeth, do you wanna talk about what you see happening on December ninth and tenth, just so council's fully aware of your expectations are?
Sure, when, um, when I met with each of the council members and the community folks and, you know, that particular interview, community interview day, um, we talked just briefly about what the interview events, um, could be. And I know there was some, there was a desire to have, uh, perhaps, uh, a tour for the candidates on, say, that Friday, um, maybe mid-afternoon, um, have them get into their hotels if they're from out of state or out of the area, um, and then meet again to have a dinner either before or after an open house event for Friday night. And then Saturday morning would be a round robin interviews with anywhere between three, four panels. And then deliberation would occur after that in the afternoon, and the rest of the panelists could maybe, um, leave at that time, so that, um, you know, really deliberation would be up to the council and the scores of the interviews and, um, have a liaison kinda share the pros and cons of each of the panels. So, um, deliberation, a contract in, um, would be negotiated that day in the next, probably within twenty-four hours, and you'd have it on the Monday night council meeting agenda for people. December, I believe, fourteen, is it? Thirteen?
Wow, wow.
Yeah, December twelfth.
Fourteenth.
So to that point, we probably should be working on a contract, um, and, and getting kind of a framework contract put together. Um, is that something you want Dave Bruner to put together, or do you want Mike Galloway to put it together?
Mike, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I was, I was just on your contract, obviously, to turn around that quick, the council will probably wanna look at it beforehand and be comfortable with it. So I was, I was asking if the council wanted to have Dave Bruner, our city attorney, to put it together, or a kind of tentative, or wanted Mike Galloway to put it together?
Oh, I, I do, uh, usually do a draft, and then during deliberation, I, um, I ask the council to give me some parameters for negotiation, so that I can have it drafted by the end of that particular day.
Well, we'll want one of our legal counsel to review it ahead of time.
Yeah.
So if you wanna get us a draft of what you would use, so we can have our legal counsel look at it, that would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable being the person rather than Mike? It'd be
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you're good with it, that's what I would prefer.
Yeah.
Is, we just do it in-house.
It's a straight-up.
Save these money there.
Yeah. There's some nuances that I can give you some
We got a template.
Yeah, we wanted to look at Mike's, uh, from six years ago.
Are you talking about
Yeah, about Dave Wood, yeah, yeah.
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 And there's some changes that probably should be in, and we can talk about it.
Okay. And then, but, back to the timeline, it, it, yeah, cause I, I'd kind of, some people are a little concerned that it's a crunched timeline. Um, are there still concerns out there, or do we wanna stay on this course?
It's getting posted tomorrow.
It has
Yeah.
If, if, if you're gonna hit December eleventh, it has to be posted tomorrow.
Yeah, we want it posted tomorrow.
No, I agree, that's what I'm saying, that if, if it's not posted tomorrow, then we need to consider, like,
Yeah, but
Pushing it out.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess my question is, is, do you want it pushed out regardless of, you know, it, it being sent out tomorrow? I mean, tomorrow, tomorrow, everybody's good with, right?
Right, right.
Okay, but are, is there concerns about, you know, having, when, when, start from the top, is there concerns about the applications being accepted till noon? And then screening, written, and, you know, the rest of it? I've just been told that there's a little concern there, so
Well, I voiced my concern in our, in our small group with Elizabeth that it, we, we allocated a month in two thousand sixteen. And I, I just saw, I, I just think that from posting the, the, uh, profile to, uh, closing down the application process eighteen days is really short. And I, I think in order to give us time again to attract, uh, talent, we should push it back.
Are you thinking a week?
I
You're running after what time?
I, I would, at minimum, a week. And I would be more comfortable with, with pushing it out a month, and that will be taking it, I know it's kicking the can down the road, but I, again, I think to attract a, a pool of talented and qualified people, people need to think things, the word needs to get out. I, I also think that to thoroughly vet the candidates, that's a really critical step. And that, so we have a one, one week to screen from eleven fourteen to eleven twenty-one, and then the background checks are being accomplished in eleven days, and that's include, from eleven twenty-one to twelve-two. What?
GPS, GPS.
Oh, whatever, I don't know.
Oh, she's driving.
I, okay, but
I don't disagree with you, Carolyn, but what are you looking at?
And it's over Thanksgiving.
Right, then you're into Thanksgiving.
And how, how do you vet people, and how do you get them, are they skiing, or are they at work, or are, you know, or how do you even access where you're getting your information and doing background checks? Like, you know, records and every, everything that Elizabeth intends to do. That, I mean, one week to screen, eleven days background checks, considering we have Thanksgiving.
Couple of the considerations I would point out, um, cause I, I think it's aggressive, and I know Elizabeth does a good job. We've been, we've been aggressive on some searches, but, um, I think you, if, if you have an in-state candidate in particular, um, they're gonna have a lot of pressure for them, for the city, their commu- current community, to finish the budget. You know, so you're late January, early February, um, that you're still wrapping up the budget. So, you know, when you start looking at expectation of when you want someone to start, they're not gonna want to start in January, they're gonna want to start in February or March. Um, you know, and we're gonna be far enough down the, the budget standpoint that someone's not gonna come walk in and really impact the budget at that point. Um, so, I mean, to me, you're looking for the forever candidate. Um, I would just suggest not be in a hurry, doing it very, um, logically, I guess, in my, in my mind. And, and being very logical about it.
Very thorough.
Thorough about it would be my suggestion, and, and, you know, going and having interviews in early January, I think really would, would help. That's my two cents, I'm just talking with, um, Jeff, I know we had a conversation today, not throwing you under the bus at all, but, um, here I go.
Why not?
But, I mean, you, you say typically with your police chief, you're doing thirty to forty-five day, oh, you know, windows
You don't wanna stretch it out too long, but at the same time, you don't wanna compress it too short. On the point about the screening and stuff typically, and of course, I'm a one-horse shop and I've got the time, so the day I get an application, I start doing preliminary checks and things like that as they come in. I don't wait for them all to come in and then start doing it, so some of this, I'm sure, is being done as the process evolves. Uh, but I think, you know, eighteen days is pretty short. Uh, you know, the market, I suspect, is gonna be a little bit down from the norm, if it's anything like police chiefs. Um, it's, it's hard to say, and then with, like you said, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, uh, and there's a number of factors, I think I talked to Carolyn or somebody about this today. You've got the end of a school semester, you've got the city budgets. Uh, there's just a number of things that become little speed bumps in this process that it may, uh, have an implication on who applies. I don't wanna leave in the middle of the school year, or I don't wanna leave in February, cause it's, you know, into the next semester. Or, like Mike mentioned, I don't feel comfortable leaving my current city's budget not complete or something. There's a lot of things that probably factor into the timetable.
So if we did forty-five days off in a day, that puts us at February, or February, December ninth?
Mike, did I hear you say that? I'm not sure if I heard, did you say you wouldn't interview until January? Is that, did you say that?
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, if you go to, like, December ninth, you're, you're probably looking at the first or second week in January.
I just wanted to make sure that I heard that right.
Because if you push it back at all, I mean, even a week, you're probably too close to the Christmas holiday and get interviews completed.
I think it'd be the smart thing to do, you know? This is busiest time for year, for everybody, you know, whether it be family life or businesses. Um, I wouldn't have a problem pushing up, but Elizabeth, so what's your timeline, though? So this contractually evolves around you also, so how does this fit into your schedule?
Um, I'm also doing a fifty million dollar budget for the city of Clive at that time. So, um, yeah, it gets, it, obviously, you know, we wanted to, um, address the, the opening as, as quickly as possible, that was, um, you know, the desire of, of the city at the time. So, um, so I was willing to be dedicated to that timeline. Now, again, um, my answer was, if you want to bump it back, you, you know, then I will be dedicated to bumping that back. Um, you probably, like, you know, you're all thinking about, um, yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna do much around the holidays as far as the deadline and, um, and the interviews, so, um, um, so bumping it to December nine, ten, for, uh, or, excuse me, ninth would be Friday, to have that be the deadline for applications, um, you're probably talking mid-January then for interviews. And then
It's okay.
And then, um, you know, probably thirty, sixty day, uh, notice requirement typically for these type of contracts, and then starting in probably March. And that's just fine.
And if by chance we did cancel Belize, another city manager, they'd be done with their budgets, so, I mean, this makes sense.
Yeah, that may deter somebody good from applying and thinking, well, something will come up, yeah.
Jeff, what does that do for you, are you?
Well, Jeff's already committed, he's all in, he
It's overtime.
Tried to quit this morning. No, I, I can make it work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same thing.
Thank you.
Of course, now that I hear these new salary schemes.
So
Now, I would just, you know, we had forty-plus people engaged on my community interview day. If any of those folks that are participating in the panels, if you have a list of those folks, I could, you know, I could reach out to them in the next few weeks and give them a heads up, so that we can get it scheduled, say, you know, that you know, I could reach out to them in the next few weeks and give them a heads up so that we can get it scheduled, say, you know, that, that mid, um, that mid weekend in January for the Friday, Saturday. Get it on everyone's calendar now.
Yeah.
Um, that would be helpful to make sure they're available to be on a panel.
So are we going to determine the dates here and now?
Why don't we, I mean, does the fourteen, I mean, the fourteen, fifteen?
Well, she wants to, if we're going to post this tomorrow.
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah, we need to advertise it.
We need to.
Yeah, I think we keep the, the applications open until December, December ninth.
Yeah.
Okay, so applications will be accepted until noon, December ninth?
Yep.
Okay?
The screening and written phone interviews.
I mean, that can happen the following week, right?
The screening is usually, I give them one week.
Okay.
So that would be twelve sixteen?
Yep.
And then selection of finalists would be?
The twenty-third, we would know before Christmas.
Twelve twenty-three? Background checks, now what?
No, it, it'll be twelve, um.
There you go, they're shortening it up too much.
Twelve nineteen would be the date.
Twelve nineteen because we're not going to do, uh, uh, because of Christmas.
Well, no, you're doing, you're doing a meeting on the, you'll do a meeting on the nineteenth, yes.
Okay, so twelve nineteen.
Yes, because you're not going to do a meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Or the twenty? Okay. Yeah, I better start figuring that out too. So, meeting on twelve?
Works. And then January twentieth and twenty-first?
Yeah, I'm on a.
That gives me the holiday, like, three weeks to do all the background. And again, when you, I mean, I was requested to go to their locations and visit with their communities.
Seven days, aren't they? Do you? On the twelve? She's got seven days in here.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you got there?
Well, I mean, one thing you can do is we can move the, the twelve-nine up a week and then we can make everything else work. Because one of the problems is we're not having a meeting on twelve twenty-six because of Christmas. We, we moved that up a week already. So if you move your application accepted to twelve.
Two?
Two.
Okay.
I think that works.
It's still five weeks.
Yeah, it still gives you plenty of time.
Okay, so.
That makes the selection of the finalists, you got some more time.
Yes. Then you plan to have a selection of the finalists on twelve nineteen, interviews. Um, what'd you say, Elizabeth, again?
Twenty-one.
January twentieth and twenty-first?
Does that work with you, Elizabeth?
There's a whole month between selecting. Selecting and interviewing.
You have a holiday in there.
Christmas and New Years is in there.
Basically two weeks.
Seems like a long time though.
Yeah.
I think it does too.
That, yeah, I don't know. If it was me, I think that'd be, uh, worrisome.
So go January fourteenth and twentieth? Is that what you're thinking?
Thirteen, fourteenth?
Or whatever.
That's what I, when I'm sitting here picking it, that's what I originally pointed to, but. I mean, that's my birthday, so I don't really want to spend my day doing that, but I mean, that's better for.
I'd just be a morning.
I mean.
So what is it?
The birthday.
So.
Thanks, but I'm in.
Start at the beginning again, accepting apps until when?
December second?
Twelve-two.
Twelve-two.
Selection twelve nineteen.
No, hold on. We got one in between. Scritting and, screening and phone interview, twelve sixteen?
I had that written down, twelve, two to six, that's two weeks.
Well, it's probably twelve-nine now.
Yeah, just a week.
Okay, one week is.
The eleventh was, was on a Friday and the fourteenth was the following Monday.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
I got it.
So you could have it twelve-two.
So you could have it twelve-five. For the screening.
Yeah, she, okay.
That's a Monday. That's the same setup as the one before on eleven.
Okay, now I'm not, so you're saying twelve-five?
Right.
For the screening.
The screening.
Just start the screening?
It says screening, written and or phone interview.
And that's a date for Elizabeth?
I was just going to say.
The council.
That's for her.
C P K?
Yeah.
We just need the dates that were, were involved in. Say what we're going to run the ads to and then she should create the rest of the schedule.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we're paying her to do.
I would caution about the acceptance of apps and such and then the backend when the interview's going to be.
Yeah.
You don't want it to be forty-five days.
No.
You want to compress it to some point. Like, by the time you pick your finalists, you want to give a minimum two weeks' notice, maybe three, but I, I wouldn't go forty-five.
So when we select the candidates on twelve nineteen, is the thirteenth and fourteenth too far out?
I think that's, that's about right.
Elizabeth, does those dates work for you?
Elizabeth, are you there?
Yeah.
I think she has a hard time.
Yeah, I just had to unmute. Um, yeah, the thirteenth and fourteenth will work.
Or what?
Interviews.
Interviews.
So really the fourteenth.
Oh, thirteenth and fourteenth, uh, okay, uh, interviews. I, I was still back on the screening.
Does the fourteenth is the key date for the city council for the interview day? I mean, you don't have to participate in the thirteenth. There'll be an open house. That'd be really the, the only time that the council would have an interaction. There'll be dinner. A couple, the mayor and a couple council members typically would, would do dinner. Um, so the question is, does the, does the fourteenth work?
Of what month?
January. Tom, Misty?
Got it.
Okay, Mark?
Hope so. I just don't have the, my calendar in front of me.
Fourteenth of January work for you?
As far as I know.
Okay. Right, and it's, it's obviously tentative. That's the way we'll publish it, but people start making plans based on that.
Yeah, and, and to let the, as Elizabeth said, let the others know.
Make it work.
Better boy.
Way to go.
Then it's in your schedule.
All right.
I want to go to JJ's birthday party.
Is there anything else in this proposal that we want for Elizabeth?
So this will all be updated with the new dates and so on. We'll, and then we'll get us a new updated version of this with the new dates whenever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a new, we'll get it out, we'll publish it pretty much simultaneously.
You're going to be working two jobs at once.
No, I don't, I don't, I can edit it, so I have other staff that work on that, so.
Elizabeth, thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you for working with us on the schedule.
She's muted.
Elizabeth, you there?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Okay.
Everything is great. I will, um, once you see it on the website, um, it's going to go out from there. So once I see it on the website, it'll, it'll get spread um, onto the, you know, internationally, of, of course, and regionally, so.
Elizabeth, would you like, would you like me to put that out on the police chief's listserv too?
Yes, yep, like, yep, as we discussed, yeah.
Okay, any, anything else?
So.
So I need a motion to approve, no, approve the position profile. Yep, changes.
I was going to get there, I just didn't know that we were done, done, done. I need a motion to approve the, uh, the, the comp study first. Or could, we need, we still need to approve this.
Um, the, the motion would be on the position profile.
On the position profile.
Nothing to do on the comp.
Nothing on the comp study, okay. Yeah, motion to approve the position profile. Tom, second it, Laverne. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Uh, roll call will go Tom?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
Uh, Laverne?
Yes.
And Kyle?
Yes.
And Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
How about a motion to adjourn? Yeah, thank you to Elizabeth.
To Elizabeth.
Motion to adjourn, uh, Tom and JJ, uh, it is non-debatable. All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
You have deciding executive privilege now.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who made the motions?
Um, Tom, then, uh, JJ, again.
Getting loose in here.
Your adjourn.
Thank you.